You have some of the best ideas. Please rise for the invocation by Reverend Charles Kuyper, Pastor of Christ Church.
Let us pray. Gracious God, we thank you for the chance to gather here tonight, Lord, and for the freedoms that our country, Lord, allows us. And, Lord, tonight, we pray for honor, that not only would we have honor as we conduct ourselves, but we pray, dear God, that we would honor one another. For it's in honoring one another created in your image that we truly honor you. We pray, dear God, for humility. Humility because not one of us alone has the answers to life's greatest challenges and problems. So, we're better together. So, we pray, God, for a sense of humility. And you, and you alone, have wisdom. So, we seek it from you, and we ask, God, that you would give it to our mayor, our council, Lord, and all those gathered here. And, Lord, we pray for unity, that we would be unified, Lord. Oh, we may have differences of opinions about certain issues, but unified in that our heart, Lord, is set upon this being a community that we all can be proud of, a community where we're glad that we live here, and a place that we're so unified in the commitment to honor each other and provide humility and honor to each individual, Lord, that other companies and corporations and individuals would want to move here, and they too would be proud to call Hickory home. We pray, God, also for courage. Give us the courage to live out what you call us to do. Respecting all other faiths and religions, we conclude this prayer in the strong name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have some scouts here from Proof 345, which is sponsored by Royal Chapel Church of God. And I'm going to ask them to introduce themselves, please.
I'm Robert Collett, Assistant Scout Host.
I'm Dr. Cassell, Second Class.
I'm Jared Sayer, Second Class.
I'm Darren Baugh.
They're here working on citizenship act, right?
In it, yeah.
Citizenship, okay. And then for Proof One, which is Kara, could you introduce yourselves, please?
I'm Anthony Klein, Star Scout.
And you're working on what badge?
Union Taker.
Okay. Thank you all for being here. We always like to have our scouts here, and see what most meetings we have some of them. Okay, special presentations. First, Administration of the Oath of Office for Deputy City Clerk, Sarah.
Ms. Yadi Fox, who is a North Carolina notary, is standing in the Ministry of Defense.
Hi, Sarah Wills, Principia. I, Sarah Wills, Principia, do solemnly swear Do solemnly swear That I will support That I will support uphold and defend Uphold and defend the Constitution The Constitution and the laws of the United States of America and laws of the United States of America that I will support that I will support and uphold and defend uphold and defend the Constitution the Constitution and the laws of the state of North Carolina and laws of the state of North Carolina not inconsistent therewith not inconsistent therewith and that I will observe and obey that I will observe and obey the laws and the ordinances the laws and the ordinances of the city of Hickory of the city of Hickory in North Carolina North Carolina and that I will faithfully and that I will faithfully perform and discharge perform and discharge the duties the duties incumbent upon me incumbent upon me as Deputy City Clerk as Deputy City Clerk of the city of Hickory of the city of Hickory North Carolina North Carolina faithfully fairly fairly and honestly and honestly and to the best of my skill and ability to the best of my skill and ability so help me God so help me God. Thank you.
And now, Mr. Matt McLeod, Parks and Recreation Director.
Mayor Wright, Members of Council, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crowe, good evening. It'd be a pleasure to be before you tonight to share some exciting news with you. As a lot of you remember, shortly after the May 19th, 2012 dedication of the Czar Baker All Children's Playground, we were notified by Playworld Systems that the playground will be featured in its 2013 product catalog. Playworld Systems catalog is not only distributed nationally, but also internationally. Playworld Systems spent two days here in Hickory back in August of 2012 doing the professional shoot. What Playworld System does each year is they select anywhere from 10 to 12 projects to spotlight and showcase in a project, in a product catalog. And these projects highlight school playgrounds, public park playgrounds, community private playgrounds, and inclusive playgrounds. In 2013, I'd like to just read all through Hickory shares the spotlight with in 2013. These following playgrounds, in addition to Hickory, are highlighted in the 2013 catalog. Santo Domingo Dominican Republic, Phoenix, Arizona, Rexburg, Idaho, Newport News, Virginia, Cottonwood Heights, Utah, Gallup, California, Cumberland, Maryland, Columbia, South Carolina, Westminster, Maryland, Caldwell, Idaho, and West Dennis, Massachusetts. It's now my pleasure to showcase Hickory, North Carolina. Well, that's more to... This is the playground that, and as you can see, it's listed as an inclusive playground. What I'd like to do, the caption, the caption is a little difficult to read for the audience, but if it does, I would like to read what the caption says. It says, "Czar Baker All Children's Playground, Hickory, North Carolina. Located in Kiwanis Park, Czar Baker All Children's Playground was built as a memorial for Czar Baker, a local child who had been tragically murdered. The people of Hickory wanted to take an extremely heartbreaking situation and create something good from it. They decided to create an inclusive playground where people of all ages and abilities can play together. Thanks to donations from all across the globe, they did just that. Local Kiwanis Club spearheaded the fundraising efforts, and the community rallied together to help raise the rest, as well as to actually build a playground. It has become a true destination park where people of all abilities build a playground daily." And it just talks about among the most popular activities on the new playground are the 50-foot slide hill slide, the accessible air glider, the play web, and that Tivo. If you're an adult, I would like to, as you see pictured at the bottom right-hand corner, is Steve Aaron, who was the Chair of our committee, and his comments where the playground is getting a phenomenal amount of use, is re-energizing the community. I feel we have really made a difference. And then Mayor Wright's comments, "We have diverse groups on the playground having a great time, kids being kids, playing together, not on phones, playing video games, or watching TV." The information that'll be going out these, just let you know, is 375,000 catalogs that Playworld will distribute with our playground on it. And Mayor, if you and Doug may, I do have hot off the press, I do have catalogs hot off the press with the playground identified. You have to stand there and say you'd like to write this way.
Well, I'd predict there're going to be at least 375,000 people reading about here. Matt, thank you, and all the Parks and Recreation people who've worked so hard to make this happen. Thanks to all the other states, the landscaping people, public works, people from every part of our Hickory staff are involved in this, and so are we. And I want to thank the council for your support. It was, there were some things that the council had to do, including, I guess we, I don't know if we had any specific votes, but we all authorized some expenditures on behalf of this playground. Somebody called me the other day and was saying, "I can't believe, I can't believe the crowd that's out here right now. They called from the playgrounds." And you go out there, it's multi-generational, there are the children, and their parents, and their grandparents, and it's just made a tremendous difference to that neighborhood and for our city.
We appreciate that, and we appreciate that, of course. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion now that anyone who'd like to speak on a specific agenda item, to do so at this time. Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion is by Wright, second, by Gibbs, it was unanimous, and all members present. Do you have a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of Hickory City Council Subcommittee? Make motion. Do you have a second?
I will second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion was of Mr. Gibbs and second of Mr. Ray Lake. Motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of January the 15th?
To approve.
Second.
Motion by Seaver, second by Patton, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Yes, unanimous. Motion to reaffirm and ratify on second reading? Motion by Fox, second by Patton, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion's carried. Any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Please be approved.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Meister, second by Lale, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion is carried.
I was about to say, while I was covering the show, Mr. Berry, you know, the agenda, it's kind of exciting, you know, something's happening in Hickory.
Well, part of what's happening is the changes to the map that y'all talked about a minute ago, and the necessity to handle the money, the buildings. And now it's exciting to be real life. A lot of development.
Departmental report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Of course, departmental report, I'll ask the CSU Development Manager, Mr. Dave, to be ready to come in the podium and present the historic preservation grant application for Ridgeview Public Library, Historic Public Library. Thank you, Mr. Berry, Mayor Wright, Mayor of Council, Mr. Crowe. Today, I'm here to talk to you briefly about the Ridgeview Public Library's grant application from the state of North Carolina. As a certified local government, you hear me kind of toss that term around every once in a while when I'm talking about historic preservation activities. Basically, the city of Hickory is certified by the National Parks Service as kind of the government that has an active historic preservation program. We, myself as a historic preservation staff and my commission members, are required to go to trainings every year, we're required to keep our surveys up to date and maintain, you know, just the administrative aspects of a historic preservation commission. As part of doing that, we're eligible, and nonprofits within the city of Hickory are eligible to apply for grants through the state of North Carolina's State Historic Preservation Office. Basically, they get the money from the federal government, and it filters down to the states, and they offer the grants once a year. Nonprofits also may apply, but they need the, they need the support of the certified local government, the CLG. The Historic Preservation Commission reviewed this application at their meeting on January 28th, and they recommend approval of it. The grant is, as you can see, it's a 60 percent, it'll pay 60 percent of the project cost with a 40 percent match of local funds required. Normally, these are for people updating historic surveys, National Register District nominations, and there are also some limited funds available for restoration projects. Usually, the grants don't seem to get above around 15,000. So, as you, as you'll see here, that's roughly, we're talking about a little bit less than that for this grant. The former Ridgeview Public Library, it's located at 415 First Street Southwest, it's listed on the National Register of Historic Places. As, as you all probably know, it was moved from its original location, which is where the current Ridgeview Library is located, at the corner of 7th Avenue and First Street Southwest. It was moved a few blocks north, still on First Street, but on the other side of the road, to 415 First Street Southwest, to land, this was back in 1998, to land owned by the Interfaith Housing Development Corporation. And a number of, Mike Watkins, the president of Interfaith, and a number of important members appear today. And when I'm, when I finish up my spiel, Mike will come up as well, talk a little bit more about the project. It's been vacant since moving to the current location, and the city is currently constructing a parking lot on city-owned land, on three city-owned parcels directly to the east of the property on Center Street, using community development block grant funds. This eventually will serve as the parking lot for the facility. This is a photograph of the front and the north side of the building. As you can see, it's a relatively small building, it's roughly 840 square feet, rectangular building. This is the rear of the property. Interfaith plans to redevelop the property into a community center and also to display historic materials and artifacts related to both the Ridgeview Community and the former Ridgeview High School. Kind of for the purposes of the grant, we, Mike and I talked a lot about splitting the project up into two phases. The grant is going to address Phase One. Phase One, Interfaith is working with CBSA, with Steve Walker and the Seals Architects, to kind of develop plans. They had an intern from Appalachian, I believe, develop some preliminary sketches, and this will take it to sealed drawings, ready for building permits. They're looking at, basically with this phase, the exterior of the building. As it's been vacant since 1998, there's been, you know, some deterioration and necessary maintenance of the building. The budget consists of $22,632 for this first phase, $4,500 of that is window repair, exterior trim, and restoration and painting, replacing the roof. The other part of it is, it's one of the reasons that the new Ridgeview Library was built, is this building is not currently ADA accessible. So, the restoration would involve building a new door on the rear of the property. You go back, you look, one of these openings here, basically, will be cut out a little deeper, and a larger opening, that one, that window opening, will become a door opening, and there'll be a ramp leading up to that with the sidewalk from the parking lot. And they'll also try to address with this some of the interior demolition that needs to happen. Basically, there was a basement that was never redug when the facility was moved, so there's a door in there, and it just basically leads down into a hole. So, there's some other things that are going to need to be, construction work that's going to need to happen on that side of things. The grant request is for $13,579. The match will be $9,053, and it's important to note, this match is going to come from Interfaith funds. I'm only up here because you all need to approve the grant because it's in the certified local government's jurisdiction. The money is going to come from Interfaith and State Historic Preservation Office for this grant. No additional city funds will be required. And then, the future improvements are going to be a new ADA-compliant bathroom. There's only a small, right, 40-square-foot, maybe, bathroom in the, in what was the librarian's office. And there's no, there's no plumbing currently hooked up in the building. Basically, it was just moved, plopped down on the site. There's no HVAC system right now. And the lighting will probably need to be upgraded, and then just the general upfits, ceiling improvements, and new carpet, those types of things. With that, if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer any of those, but otherwise, I will hand it over to Mike to see if he has any.
You're not enlarging it, are you?
No, sir.
So, out of 800 square feet, an ADA bathroom would probably take 15 percent.
It's going to take a sizable amount. And we're going to talk with the preservation branch of the state and the architect to kind of see, see what we can do there to kind of maximize, maximize that space.
Thanks, Dave. Good stuff. I'd like to thank the council for allowing Interfaith to come forward in tonight. Just a little brief history, Interfaith has been around for 30 years, and we really appreciate what all the cities have done to get Ridgeview out of there. As David kind of already mentioned, back in 1998, the library moved this property, been very little done to it. So, naturally, it's deteriorated, moved around the edges, outside, and some of the inside, of course, has deteriorated. So, we started last, back in 2011. We hired a lady named Beth Keener to plan for this historical site. And this was approved as a national historical site on May 12, 2011. And 2012, the city of Hickory, I'd like to thank them also for granting to pay you the parking lot. We hadn't invited out, it's pretty well been done, lights have been put up, and it's really helping the current of that area. Interfaith also has spent out $5,000. They made a contract with CVS Architects to draw up plans for a scope of work, and we get benefit mix, but the work's got to be done. So, we want to be sure it's done in a way that it's preserved historical value and of that, not with anybody coming in, going working on it. So, we've already signed a contract, and those plans have been drawn right now. And that's both outside and also the interior work. But tonight, we're here to ask for a management grant, which Dave's already mentioned. Because of the amount it's going to take, it's going to be well over $55,000, $60,000 to all the work. And as he said, only around 15, that this particular grant is the most they ever give out, but we decided to break it up into two phases. And one thought behind that was, we felt like since the library's been vacant for so long, if we got the outside of the building looking good, we got the roof done, the windows, the rear door, a lot of rotten wood around the edges, painting, and get started demolition, then we will embark on a major fundraiser campaign. We felt like it was really important for the people in the community to see something done. The library's been standing there making so long, everybody's been talking about when they're going to do something to further it. So, once they see this happening, I think it'll really help our fundraising campaign. So, I want y'all to thank the Interfaith tonight, putting ownership and money into this, to be able to pay out to get this historical site, and also for the plans we pointed. And we do plan on kind of fundraising in the Ridgeview area, but we feel like it's important that the people in the area also take ownership and pride in the model of the library. So, at this point, I'd like to strongly recommend that the council consider approving the grant request, because I think this would be the next step in making this library something that the people in the area can begin to use. So, if it hasn't been set vacant for too long, and we really appreciate it. And for those of you who are not aware, Interfaith House is made up of two major churches. There are five members of the Morning Star Baptist Church, and five members of the Trinity Baptist Church. And the pastors of both churches belong to the committee. Anybody have any questions for me?
Well, Phase Two, will it qualify for grant?
Potentially.
I'm not, haven't been to town yet.
Is there anything we can do to help make that grant happen?
I'd have to wait until the city to see. I'm not exactly sure what grant's available.
Yeah, there's really not anything, you know, in addition. I mean, obviously, if you, you know, you can add, you know, call the State Historic Preservation Office and, you know, lend your support to the, to the application, I guess that would be the only thing additional at this point.
We did have a meeting with Todd, who's still here about a year or so ago, with Assistant City Manager, and the guy probably from Raleigh, that was looking into the possibility of some grant money for renovation, and to help feedback on that. I'm not sure of what that said, but we had a meeting with Todd and Assistant City Manager, and she had a person come in that writes the grants, and they were looking into that, but I hope they will give you feedback and what they think.
I think we can raise the money locally, but there's no such thing as too much money when you're running up the historical site. I'd like to say that a lot of people in the community that support and excited and anxious to see what's going forward, I think it's very, very important. We have motion of Mr. Gibbs, second of Mr. Fox, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. This is our newest and strongest case. Thank you.
Next, Departmental Report, I'll ask Mr. Lee to come back in the podium and present to council the vacant building renovation demolition grant.
Thank you, Mr. Berry, Mr. Mayor of Council, Mayor Wright, Mr. Crowe. Here to talk briefly about, we've gotten an application for another vacant building grant. The last one of these that you all approved was for the hollow hosiery and the old redevelopment, but obviously, it's going along at a pretty good pace now. This, this project is for the demolition of the Regency Motel. As you know, the vacant building grant program, when it was originally established, it allows for two types of grants, grants for the restoration of vacant buildings, as in the case of hollow hosiery and some of the other projects that you all have approved, and also for demolition of substandard and functionally obsolete buildings. We've only done two demolition grants, to the best of my knowledge. And it was, the first one was for property up on Lenorine Boulevard that's owned by the Jogida, the company that owns kind of all of that corner. It was probably a 15,000-square-foot concrete block warehouse that was kind of set back from the road and kind of a haven for homeless folks and other kind of derelict activities. And they, they've demolished that, and they're, they're working on currently marketing that whole corner as a potential development. We hope to see some, some movement on that in the near future. The other one was the former Mongolian barbecue site, I believe it was Western Steer, I think, on Highway 70 Southwest. And that property, soon after it was demolished, was redeveloped into a Dollar General. So, we've had, you know, two of those projects, and they're both, I think, been reasonably successful so far, obviously. I hope that the one on Lenorine Boulevard redevelops in the near future. Obviously, I hope that the Lenorine Boulevard redevelops in the near future. But this one is for the former Regency Motel, the old Howard Johnson. It's located at forty-three Highway Seventy Southwest. Their estimated demolition cost is roughly eighty-six thousand dollars. As you can see from previous slide, the grants are available up to twenty thousand or thirty-five percent of your project cost, whichever's less. And at eighty-five thousand, this would be eligible for the full demolition grant. The owner is seeking to demolish the property for future, for future development. There's no firm plans for it at this time. They also, the owner also owns the property directly across the street from this, the former Pet Dairy Building. These are just some quick photographs of the, of the building. As you can see, it's sort of, it's definitely a trespass and safety risk, just on the basis of you've got probably a hundred and some just doors entering into all these rooms. And they're, it's not as easy to secure as a former industrial site, once these hotels close. Because pretty much most hotel doors, a decent kick, you can pretty much knock the door in. These are just a couple more photographs of the building. And this is showing the, an aerial view of the site. This is the former Pet Dairy site here. This is also owned, the tattoo parlor is also owned by the same company. And then, this is the former Howard Johnson Regency Motel here, just directly on the other side of Fourth Street Drive Southwest. So, they're looking at kind of pairing these two projects together, I think, to kind of help revitalize that area right around, kind of between the shopping center and the Catholic Parson Mall. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have no questions. I just have to comment that, you know, this redevelopment, along with the operation of that to grant for the Dollar General, for the city redevelopment, will certainly be a game changer at that intersection. And it will partner very well with the million-dollar investment we have in the Fourth Street extension, where sometimes we fail to remember that we've made that investment in previous years at the new gateway in Hickory. So, I would leave a quote for, I'll second.
Motion by Mrs. Fox, second by Mrs. Patton, in discussion. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. You choose now.
Next department report, I'll ask Assistant Public Services Director Mr. Ken and Greer to come and present. Mr. Greer is going to present to council a bid to replace the Horstford Creek waterline that was built in nineteen fifty.
Mayor, members of council, Mr. Barry, Mr. Crum, good evening and thank you for allowing me to speak this evening regarding our Horstford Creek twenty-inch waterline project. Annually, Public Utilities looks at projects that we can identify that need to either be replacement or rehabilitation of existing infrastructure to help with our sustainability efforts as we, again, try to beef up our internal system with the public utilities. The projects we identify are really captured in our budget process. When I meet with each one of the divisions and we start looking at what projects are out there that need to be done, that help us with continuing our efforts and overall serving of customers. Horstford Creek project did come out as one of those, and again, it is a twenty-inch waterline that really comes from the water plant out into some, some pretty big parts of the system. We did, we did identify this project as one of those that needed to be replacement versus rehabilitation. If you look at them, I apologize, it's kind of hard to see. But what we're doing, there's a project, right now, the existing twenty-inch line runs from basically J.C. Park, down Fifteenth, across Horstford Creek, and then up Thirteenth Avenue to Tenth Street Boulevard. So, there's one section there that we're really looking at trying to address for a couple different reasons. The project itself is about three thousand foot long, so it's a half a million dollar project, but it is twenty-inch waterline, so there's some pretty substantial cost there. It was originally constructed in nineteen fifty-four, so of course, it's served its useful life. It's done pretty well for us. Again, just a general description there, it does go from J.C. Park and it runs in the roadway and then crosses the creek and of course, into roadway on Thirteenth House. And principally, this line, the replacement line, will follow pretty much the same route with really just one exception. If you look on the screen, the light blue line here is the existing alignment. J.C. Park's up here, so it comes down Fifteenth. It makes about a twenty-two degree bend and actually runs under this house. So, a house was constructed on top of this line at some time in the past. And then, it takes some kind of funny bends, comes down the creek, across, and then back up the other side. We're trying to clean that up a little bit. The property that you see highlighted here actually is city of Hickory property. So, it's utilities property that we purchased in the past for some work that we had to do on the sewer line. So, we do own that lot. This allows us to shift the line over. It lets us straighten up the alignment. It looks like this is a pretty straight alignment, but actually, this line comes over, it turns back, turns down the hill, turns back straight. So, there's a lot of bends in there that we're trying to clean up. The new alignment just comes straight down the road, it comes across the creek, and then the major bend we have is here in the cul-de-sac. You can notice that the line is switching sides of this property. We have an easement, actually have an easement on both sides of this property. This side is a twenty-foot easement. What we're moving to actually is a thirty-foot easement, so we'll have a little more room to work in there. It is the main transmission line from the water plant to our Ninth Avenue tank. The Ninth Avenue tank is what serves One Twenty-Seven, Alexander County, Conover, Northeast Hickory, a big part of northwest Hickory, so there's a lot of load that's on this tank, which makes this a critical line for us. And that's one of the reasons it actually jumped a little ahead of some others is because of the risk assessment. If we look at lines and the result of failure is substantial water loss, then of course, that's one of them that jumps ahead of the pack. And from our records, looking at this line, it does carry about forty percent of our daily demand. So, about four-point-eight million gallons a day comes through that line, really to the Ninth Avenue tank, pour down One Twenty-Seven. Again, the project was identified by public utilities staff as a part of our budget process, so we look at them and we have, of course, the laundry list of projects, and then we kind of get the ones that we know that we can work with. Council approved in two thousand and six, I believe, was a replacement rehabilitation reserve that we could put back, it's a dollar, on fixed charges that we put back every year. And that's what we've been doing these replacement rehab projects with. The project is a continuation of our sustainability efforts, because again, what we try to do is we want to make sure that our lines in town are just as good as all our lines that are out of town, if not better. So, we're trying to keep those rehabilitated and that's a lot of the work that you're seeing us do now. Staff is requesting that city council accept the bids and award the contract with Advanced Development Concepts in the amount of five-hundred-and-seventy-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-five dollars for construction of this project. We already have Gavin Dorn, the engineer, that designed the project under contract for construction activities, so that part's already covered. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions of council in the house.
Does the property owner, the new easement, know that's coming through there?
Yes, that's a Ms. Reeves, and we've talked to her. And then, on the other side is a...
Dr. Welch.
Yes, and they're going to do some changes.
Two quick ones. Is there any disruption to service because of this? And do you have to do anything with the old line? Does it just remain and there's no cost to it, or do you have to do something to rid it?
There's pieces in the old line that will actually go in and cut and cap, and then parts of it get flowable field, so they don't serve as a, as a future problem for the roadway, because again, the existing line is in the road. There will be brief periods that there's water out, but when I say brief, I'm talking a couple, three, four hours. And those will be coordinated with the, of course, customers that are affected, and that's only when we're timing over. The beauty about changing our alignment here a little bit is, we can actually construct this entire project, and the only outage will be when we're making those tileovers to the new line from the old.
So, this is causing, doing whatever they have to do to the old line?
Yes, sir. Yeah, the cost there is a complete project.
Is it like filling in the pipelines and the dirt, so that they never collapse or some such as that?
Yes, ma'am. There's sections that we actually put, it's called flowable field, but really, it's like a mortar mix kind of concrete that goes in, just flows in really easy. There's portions of this line that get that, and there's portions that are outside of the line, like what crosses in the creek and through the woods there. We're not doing that because there's really no, if it were to break and settle, there's no problem with it other than going in and putting dirt back in.
And then, this is a segment of that area from the water plant to the new Ninth Avenue for these public stores. So, what about on either end of this section, how, what's the condition of the water line? Has it been repaired previously?
We've actually, with the section, this line's kind of in sections because it's, you know, half a million dollars to pop on it. Probably ten years ago, we did the section from the water plant to basically where this starts. This is the next section, and then in future years, you'll have projects that'll just keep it coming across.
Is that whole line nineteen fifty, wrong?
Yes.
Wow.
Does a new section in any way, I guess, overpopulate the old section? I mean, in other words, you put in a new section, does that increase the possibility of the old section failing because of the new section being more sturdy or?
If this line didn't carry as much, carry as much water as what it does, you would have some buildup in those lines. This line carries, again, about forty percent of our water every day. So, the problem we have, it's almost that in that section, which is where the pressures are really high, the pipe's thinning because there's so much water that comes through and the pressures are so high. As you get up on top of the hill, the pressure drops fifteen, twenty pounds, and just the water moving through the line doesn't really bother it. So, to answer your question, we don't, we don't foresee that being a problem. Replacing this section, causing increased pressure is not a problem.
Motion, Mr. Lee. Motion by Mrs. Fox, second by Mrs. Patton. Mrs. Patton, make the motion.
Mrs. Fox second.
Oh, Mrs. Fox second. Okay, I'll give the right question. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That's enough.
Last department report, I'll ask Chief Financial Officer Assistant City Manager Ward Wood to come and present. Department of Finance.
Mayor, I'm the city council, Mr. Barry, Mr. Crum. Before we get to the finance report, earlier tonight, you approved a, on consent, a resolution approving the installment financing contract and deed of trust on the Hickory and Toppa Westwater Treatment Plant with PNC Bank. We have a closing scheduled February twelfth. Ordinarily, resolutions don't require two readings. This resolution contains a contract as well as a deed of trust, and just out of the bonus of caution, we would like a second reading. I know you do not like doing second readings at a work like this, but in this case, we do have a closing before our next meeting, and this is the last piece that we need to put into place to close everything. The local government commission did approve the financing agreement today, so we've been approved, and all we have left is the closing. We have to take this resolution with us while we...
I move a quick one, second please.
What do you say? I do resist if I didn't say we only would do this in the first...
And I drew the short straw. I knew that that would be a common...
But I believe we can carry this one forward.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no.
Thank you. All right. Quarterly finance report for the second quarter of the current fiscal year, so this will be from July to December. So, we're really getting to the point where we can get a better feel for how we're doing this fiscal year. We'll take a start with the general fund, which is about fifty percent of your overall budget. It's about forty-three million dollar fund. Revenues year-to-date through December, fifty-six, almost fifty-seven percent. My five-year average says we'll be at fifty-seven and a half. That's, that's good. We feel good about where we're on the revenue side. Just a side note, reason, you know, you're fifty percent a year complete and almost fifty-seven percent of revenue, and we've gotten about seventy percent of our property tax revenue at some point, so that drops that number up a little bit. On the expenditure side, year-to-date spent and incurred were just over fifty-four percent. The five-year average says we'll be around fifty, and there's an explanation for that, but I'll get to in a second. So, we're running ahead of the expenditure side, but there's a reason for that. So, the bottom line, revenues over or under expenditures, we have collected two-point-seven million dollars more than we've spent through December. The five-year average says we'll be, have collected five million dollars more than we've spent. What has happened is, we've moved two-point-five million dollars out of the general fund to the capital reserve fund. We did that in the first half of the year. Ordinarily, that bigger number does not move from the general fund to the capital reserve fund, so when you, when you account for that, we're really like where we need to move. Does that make sense?
We always move money from the general fund to the capital reserve fund, so why wouldn't it show up?
Because, because we don't, we don't move two-point-five million dollars. We generally move, actually, we've moved about over three million, but two-point-five that we set aside in fund balance, remember the start of the fiscal year. So, we set aside a whole lot more for capital reserve out of the general fund to move over to the capital reserve fund than ordinarily do. So, that's what's driving that number up. You're right, we always move money out of the general fund, capital reserve, generally not that big enough.
Appropriately, we adopt the budget decision.
Correct, correct. So, that, that explains that difference there. So, that's the general fund. So, on the whole, we feel pretty good about where we are so far in the general fund. Moving to the water and sewer fund, fifty percent a year complete, and this is a twenty million dollar fund. On the revenue side, we have collected forty-eight percent of our revenues with fifty percent a year complete, and our five-year average says we'll be at forty-five percent. So, we're doing well with our water sales so far through the first six months of fiscal year, so we feel good about that. April, May, and June are the big water months, and we make a lot of ground up in the warmer months coming in the year. On the expenditure side, year-to-date spent or incurred were about forty-eight percent. The five-year average says we'll be at about forty-eight percent. So, the bottom line for the water and sewer fund through six months, revenues over expenditures, we've collected eight-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand dollars more than we've spent. Our five-year average says we'll be at a hundred-and-forty thousand, so we're doing well in the water and sewer fund. The water and sewer fund is, continues to perform well during this time, so we feel good about that. Any questions so far? Moving to some graphs here. This is building permits, six months, July through December, compared to the same six months for these fiscal years. Through December, we had permitted in Hickory eighteen-point-four million dollars in building permits. You can see the trend, there's that anomaly with the top of Valley Medical Centers, but the last four years, we've done about fifty million dollars in value permitting. We're on course to do about thirty-seven million. So, that's, that's not a good sign, but that's, that's where we are.
It's all permits, not just new construction?
Correct, that's, that's correct. That's everything. Residential, commercial, renovation, and new. So, that's, that's everything. So, that's, we'll continue to keep an eye on that in the report. Switching gears a little bit, just some comparative numbers. This, these are, I know it's difficult to see. These are the cities in North Carolina, twenty-five thousand population and above. And this chart represents, based on FY ten, eleven data, the per capita property tax base for each of these cities. Simple math, take the property tax base, divide it by the population, you get, you get one of these numbers. Hickory, per capita property tax base is a hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars for every man, woman, and child in Hickory. So, we're, I think it's, I think we're twelfth out of thirty-seven cities. Mooresville is the highest. I think they're at, I think that's a hundred-and-fifty-five thousand. And Jacksonville down here is the lowest, they're about forty-five thousand. So, this is, this is interesting. A few years ago, we were probably in the top six or seven, so we're still, we're in pretty good company with Raleigh and Apex and Huntersville and some others. But over time, we have, we have seen somewhat of a slide, and some of these others have grown. So, this was, this was off the, the lead, this data was gotten retrieved off the lead's website, and so I thought it'd be kind of interesting to see how we compare on a per capita basis. That's still a strong, with our industrial base, still a strong number at a hundred-and-fifteen thousand per capita. That just gives you, gives you a little feeling. On the lower end here, you've got Jacksonville, Goldsboro, Fayetteville, Thomasville, Rocky Mount, and then Mooresville, Cornelius, Cary, Concord, Wilmington, on the upper end. Okay. How about some, how about some property tax, some fun facts on property taxes? Is there such a thing as fun facts on, we're going to find out. So, for all these, those thirty-seven cities above twenty-five thousand population in North Carolina, here's some, here's some interesting, interesting data. Since nineteen ninety-eight, only Hickory and Cary have not increased their property tax rate at any time. Some of these cities, of these thirty-seven cities, may have gone up a penny or two, they've come down, but ours and Cary's has not gone up. Actually, that number goes further back than that. For the last eighteen years, Hickory has not increased its property tax rate any. And Cary's, I had to call down there to get this information, their last property tax increase was nineteen eighty-nine. So, that's, that's just the result of the growth that they've, that they've had, that they've been able to... able to continuously reduce their property tax rate. So that was interesting. Now those thirty-seven cities, we're the only ones that at no time have raised a property tax. The average property tax rate among those thirty-seven cities is forty-eight and a half cents. Ours is fifty cents, so we're, we're close to the average. Matter of fact, we're right in the middle. You've got eighteen cities with rates higher than Hickory, you've got seventeen cities with rates lower than Hickory. So that's about as close to the middle as you can get on thirty-six. The lowest rate is Indian Trail outside of, it's between Monroe and Charlotte and Union County. It's a veteran community for Charlotte, and they're at eighteen and a half cents. The highest rate is High Point, it's sixty-seven and a half cents. There are seven cities below thirty cents, which is an exceptionally low property tax rate, and all those cities are in growth areas or veteran communities for other cities, but totally around Charlotte and Raleigh. And there are four cities among those thirty-seven that are sixty cents or higher. Three of those are basically manufacturing-type communities, and one's a military community. So that's just some, some interesting things. And just the last little page of the fun facts on property tax. We're gonna look at since the turn of the century, the most recent century, FY two thousand, two thousand and one, compared to current property tax rates. Who has, which community has seen the overall largest increase in the last twelve, twelve years? That'd be Rocky Mount. They've gone from forty-six cents to fifty-eight cents, so they've seen a twelve cent increase over the last twelve years. Who's had the largest overall decline?
Cary.
Actually Durham. Cary's continues to drop, but they've gone from sixty-nine cents in FY two thousand and one down to fifty-six point seven five cents. I think Cary was the second one.
Do you happen to know what's happened to Rocky Mount's tax base?
It has declined. So much of their property tax rate increases have been to offset declines in tax base. Interestingly, and I haven't looked at this, Mooresville has had some of the strongest tax base growth, and they've also increased taxes. So that tells me that they're, it must be, not only is their tax base growing, which gives them additional revenue, they must be taking steps to do some major projects as well. So that was, that was-
Rocky Mount, that is interesting because they might have one of the highest early form-up rates in the state. I think it was the highest, my last time I went to the charge.
So what's happening? But what's happening is all working-
Well, I understand that. I just-
So that's, that was, that was interesting. So Durham's seen growth, so they've been able to decrease their property tax rate. Who has had the largest one-time increase? That'd be Jacksonville. They, one, one year during this span, they went up nine point five cents. And I guess the whip will tell about it, I don't know.
Mm-hmm. Several politicians have.
And who has gone the longest time period with no change in their rate?
Hickory.
Hickory. Ten years at fifty cents. So we've made the little fun facts on property tax rates.
Now Lexington's not up there. Lexington is under twenty-five thousand?
Lexington is over twenty-five thousand. They just didn't happen to make any of these categories. They have seen tremendous decline in their property tax base, but they are also an electric city, which has helped them keep their head above them. Okay. Just real quickly, last little slide here, just some upcoming things. We're working on the development of the upcoming year's budget, FY thirteen, fourteen. On February nineteenth, you're gonna have the external appropriation requests coming forward, and on March fifth, the board and commission work plan. So we're in the budget development process, we've met with departments, and we're working on that as we, as we speak. And just lastly, at your next city council meeting, the reason this is really a, it's just a piece of, replacing a piece of equipment, but it is a big number, so I felt the need to bring this up here, but we're gonna be appropriating seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we have earmarked in capital reserve for replacement of the latter truck, a latter truck three at the fire department. Again, we have the money in the capital reserve, and really thanks to Chief Holler and his staff, we were expecting to spend about eight hundred and fifty thousand. So they really did a lot of work and were able to get us a good price. That's why we wanna, we wanna move on it a little earlier than we might have. We probably would have done this the first of the, with the new budget, but we feel a need to move forward with that now. That'll be coming forward in your next, next agenda. And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chris. So, did y'all find those to be fun facts? Because I love that stuff. Okay. And then your fourth, I just see one.
Yes, I'd like to point Junior Hedrick to take the place of Frank Moses, who designed January twenty-second. Moses had the job out of town, and Junior Hood is still a veteran.
Any others? Do we have a second, Mr. Speaker? No. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. Districts, requests? Do you have any persons requesting to be heard?
I'd like to say something. Remain alert, guard, to the next commercial. City council members, I'd like to, thank you for hearing me today. I'm glad to see that something is actually being done for the Ridgeview Community Library. I remember as a child coming up, my grandma in San Bruno Williams, and I thought about her really hard today because she and I, we shared the same birthday just today. She used to say, she used to read Paul Robinson's poetry in the, from the starting library and all that. And I'd also like to talk to city council about something that they may have failed to remember, about the extension on the current Ridgeview Library. I think that was put on the books quite a few years back, and the expansion on that library. I wonder if that'll be brought back to the forefront as something done there also. And also, I'd like to, we'd like to understand and know who's gonna get those contracts to do the work on the Ridgeview Library. We don't want someone, you know, from a city far away to come into our city, take our money, and take it back to their city. We'd like to keep that here, because there's no other jobs coming in here. So if you were, get a chance when you talk these things over, get back to us with that, okay? Thank you.
This is typically an as a fox for additions.
Well, these are in terms of contract, that will actually be done by, you know, the city won't have involved in that, so that'll be a-
I'm certain the grant conditions would indicate how they have to go about it, I vote yes. So that's interface, interface and others. Any matters not on the agenda? General comments?
Rollcat cookies.
Rollcat cookies?
Rollcat, place my case, place the old Ford case on.
Okay, what's the hot word gonna be here, guys? Well, Mr. Meiser and I were there, we were at the competitive explaining meeting today, and some things are gonna be rolled out on that. We did send the consultant back pushing more work, and I think you're gonna be interested in what that's showing. You know, we, as a county, well, as a region, actually, which is Catalina County, given this, there's work to be done in education, and jobs, and job sites, and a few other things. Those are the most important things I worry about. Any other comments? Anything going on that we ought to talk about?
I didn't know the weather, the heat, my center's been pretty active today, and you know, something going on right now, February, it's been a round pin today with the city itself. I heard the food was so good, John Gordon Ross is trying to buy some stuff back next year.
What a real thing.
It's gonna be every day, it's a move.
Any other comments? Thoughts? Thank you. And being here.
Most in the chair.
All in favor, please say aye. Mr. Chief Justice.